I'd like to call the October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen meeting of Hartville Council to order. Can we have a four clock please?
Williams?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Cozy?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Do we have any citizens' comments on agenda matters only?
Is water flooding on the agenda anyplace?
Um, no. Not right now.
I guess I wait till later.
You can wait, okay. We'll move on to the fiscal office room.
You have the council minutes from the October first meeting. There's no changes, motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
And you have the financial report for September. No questions, motion to approve.
Motion to approve the September monthly report.
Second. Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
And you have the financial report for September. No questions, motion to approve.
Motion to approve the September monthly report.
Second. Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, I just have a couple items. Saturday from ten thirty to eleven thirty, the YMCA is having a dog walk up at Hartville Memorial Park. They are giving prizes for the best costumes for dogs and they will also be collecting donations for the Stark County Humane Society. They had it last year for the first time and it was very popular. Um, we have trick or treat coming up Sunday, October twenty seventh from three to five. And there's also a trick or treat downtown the day before, the twenty-sixth, trick or treat and a costume contest from eleven to one. So, do both of those. And last item, I swore in our eighth full-time officer Frank Coccoloni yesterday. He has worked for Summit County Sheriff's Office for seventeen years and has extensive training in many areas that will be of benefit to us. Does anyone have any old business?
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Last year I budgeted for this year a new pickup for the street department. And with everything so busy this summer, late summer, didn't get around to getting things checked out and everything. And this month I went out and I was trying to find prices for a new pickup. I really can't find any two thousand nineteen and the state bid, the state bid is for two thousand twenty because it probably won't come out till March of next year. So I went to Shor's and I asked them if they could give me a price and with a price assist and see what's what they could come up with. I budgeted forty-five thousand dollars last year for a pickup. And what they gave me, I went to them and then I went to Spencer as well. And Spencer didn't get back to me until a couple days later. By that time, by the time they got back to me, I'd already went to Char Shon's to get a price from them. So, but from Shoners, I got a price of thirty-three thousand, six hundred and three dollars. And that is worth a thousand dollar trade-in for a truck. What we would be trading in is a two thousand one GMC. It has a hundred and thirty thousand and I think six hundred miles, something like that. It's rusting pretty good, rocker panels are rusted out and the floorboard on the driver's side, if we were capable, we would have to do something with that because you're about to put through it. So, and it's seeing its better day and it's time to get rid of that one. And then, and also then Char Shoners gave me a price of, well, first they, I hadn't given me a price and they sent me a price, but it wasn't for an extended cab, it was just for a regular cab. And that was for thirty thousand, five hundred. So I called Royce today and I said, I said, hey, what is it for an extended cab? And he said, you know, he said add twenty-five hundred dollars onto it. So for them, it would be thirty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, plus a thousand dollars off for a trade-in, the thirty-two, five sixty-two. I would, and then, and then I, for a snowplow for it, this would be a four-wheel drive, it would be a snowplow package. And then, the snowplow, I went over to Terry's Truck and Trailer. I wanted to get a boss plow, same kind that we have on our other trucks, so when one breaks down, we can just interchange it. The cost of that is six thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. And then a strobe light and a back rack to put the strobe light in, it fits on the, on the truck. And a hundred dollar mount kit, fifty dollar light bracket. Anyway, that, that, what I would like to do is I would like to get the Chevrolet. The Chevrolet is a little bit, it's got a little bit bigger engine in it, a little bit bigger payload in it. They got the new design for two thousand twenty that, and they're getting ready reviews on it. And I think, and plus, I'd like to get the Intelligen as well, as far as that goes. But for all of that would be forty thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighteen cents. And then I added five hundred dollars onto that just in case I missed something that I would have to get. And so, what I would ask for is forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars, I'll just say forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars to purchase that pickup. If we would go with Ford, which I'm not recommending, the price assist, assistant on that, or price assist, is only good till the end of this month. And if, if we would wait longer than that, the price assistant for that would go down three thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. And so then that would be a higher price for the Ford. I'm not sure about the Chevy, I didn't ask anybody about that. I don't think, I think their price is fixed on their price assist. So I'd like to say that, and I talked to the, talked to the Shor's rep, that I might be able to get that trade-in value up a little bit, you know, if I can, all the better. Char Shoners is pretty firm on their thousand dollar trade-in. But I would like to get going on this because they hit their budget for this year. So, any questions?
And the forty thousand price, is that a B plow then?
Uh huh. Yeah, the forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five, well, that's all my add-ons. That's a plow, the strobes, and the bar, the light bar itself. Let's see what I had put on.
Is that a three-quarter or a one-time?
That's one-time.
One-time?
Yeah. That'd be the, the plow, the strobe, the rack, the mount kit, and the bracket.
You have two vendors? Could you break it down by the two vendors? One's Shoners and one?
Char Shoners.
No, the, the plow company.
Oh, I only got one vendor on that?
Yeah, I mean, what's the name of the vendor?
Oh, Terry's, Terry's Truck and Trailer.
Okay. I can do a motion, counsel, I would recommend you break it down, one for the dealership and one for the other. Question?
Well, you have no one, since brand new? Well, you can have it too.
Since brand new?
Since brand new, yeah.
Hundred and thirty thousand.
And more importantly, the miles, actually, the roasting, it seems better than this.
So was there?
It's just a two-wheel drive.
Was there a plow on, there wasn't a plow on the truck?
No, on the one that I want traded off.
Correct.
No, it's just two-wheel, it's two-wheel drive, it's only a half ton. So.
And they'll put another plow on the truck, on the roasting?
Yeah, well, it'll be an extra one, yeah. I don't want to ever do a pickup without a plow. And this is a plow, it's a nine foot two D X T, which is what we have on the five-fifth. And this one time, we'll handle that. And, you know, it could be, we won't use it for a long time, but if something would happen to that one that we have on the five-fifth, which we do use for, we just switch it out real quick. And that's a plus. I can go with eight foot, eight foot two D X T, but that's only, what is it, two, three hundred dollars that it costs and it's only a difference of like two hundred dollars. The eight foot two is six thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven, fifty, and the, the nine foot two is six hundred, six thousand, four hundred and seventy-two, fifty. And this is a B plow, you know, three foot. So, and Boss, Boss makes a good plow, they really do. So, and also I'd like to say, as much as I can with the same kind of plow. Any other questions?
Scott, do you have any current budget numbers for the street department available? I do not have those.
I have those.
Eighteen?
Yeah. I have the nineteen.
For nineteen, maybe?
Yeah. Do you want to see it everywhere? Yeah.
I mean, this was budgeted for the equipment, street equipment reserve line. I was looking for something for comparison, more or less. You have one thing reporting? Yeah, that's great equipment reserve. Yeah. Right here on top.
Also, Shoners told me they give us maintenance for two years, as far as oil changes and that kind of stuff. They do that for two months.
That was Shoners that we got?
That was Shoners, yeah. Char Shoners didn't offer, I didn't ask, but they didn't offer. But they didn't do their, uh. And that was a verbal, we didn't write it down. If, if we go with them, I'm definitely, I'm, well, yeah.
So just, just for, so everybody has, you know, working with the same numbers here. We had a beginning year balance, a hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. We, we transferred funds, end of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and then we had expenses out of twenty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars, thirty-nine cents. We currently have a balance of two hundred and five dollars, or two hundred and five thousand, four thirty-six, ten.
And that's in the street?
That's in the street, that's the capital equipment reserve. And that's where we would actually make purchases from. Basically, we put allotments in every, we put allotments into that fund for the purpose of purchasing equipment. Does anybody else want to see this? You, you want to, let me ask, you want this divided up into two, you have it authorized, you're going to do it authorized, one for presumably Shoners and one for the other company?
Yeah.
Terry's Truck and Trailer.
This is two thousand four, yeah.
Can you break, can you break your numbers down?
Yeah, I said, yeah, I would give you a sense.
You can be by bigger than you.
Yeah.
What do you budgeting the truck and trailer for?
Just for anything, like, we have a plug bracket that goes in there, you know, for your switches, for your lights and all that kind of stuff, like your strobes. If there's a connection that needs to go on there, I mean, any little thing that, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to pull it, I just want to cover myself for anything that's, that I either didn't see or wanted to.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, we'll just do it as not to exceed certain.
But what was, what was budgeted was thirty-three?
Forty-five.
Forty-five thousand is what the budget amount was from last year, was forty-five. And it's to replace the two thousand one.
There's nothing to remove in this program, like factory warranties, all that stuff is still ran great.
Yeah, yeah. I think the, I think the factory warranty is a normal three-year, thirty-six thousand. And I could look at getting an extended one. This is gas and I would have to stay away from the diesel for the pickup. So.
I was thinking about that, but you're not doing that many miles, so.
For the diesel?
No, for an extended warranty.
Yeah. Yeah, well, the, the, for the drive train, the Shoners does give me, I think it's six year, a hundred thousand miles. Forgive me, I did this quick, so I think six years, a hundred thousand miles on the drive train. On the Ford, I believe it's six years, fifty thousand miles. That though, probably, probably they get fifty thousand in six years. Cause, that'll be average about ten thousand a year. So, let's see. If, if he could go seventy-four, fifty for Terry's, I think it's Truck and Trailer.
That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's the name of it. And then.
Way down.
Say, down, add the three, three.
Way down on Eagle Circle in North Canton?
What's that?
Way down in North Canton?
Oh, yeah, yeah. They're down close to the strip on Prue Avenue.
Yes.
Terry's Truck and Trailer.
Yeah.
Right.
So we'll go ahead with the first motion, which would be for the, the plow equipment, not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars for Terry's Truck and Trailer.
Second. Question. I do not think this is really a good thing to do this year at this time. And I just want counsel to seriously think about that.
Yeah. We had a second by Williams. Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
And then, what's the forty-two thousand?
No. The seventy-four, fifty for Terry's and thirty-four, eight eighty-seven for Shoners.
So we'll just do thirty-five, five.
For thirty-five, yeah, we'll do thirty-five for Shoners?
Yeah.
You know, cause I only added two fifty for that now, or two fifty for Terry's, for Shoners.
Then we'll do a motion for the, for thirty-five thousand for Shoners. And this includes the trade-in.
Then Cozy trade-in, yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item is a first reading of resolution number two dash one nine point two two, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring the same thing emergency.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion to suspend rules?
Second. Seconded by Sullivan. Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
And then, what's the forty-two thousand?
No. The seventy-four, fifty for Terry's and thirty-four, eight eighty-seven for Shoners.
So we'll just do thirty-five, five.
For thirty-five, yeah, we'll do thirty-five for Shoners?
Yeah.
You know, cause I only added two fifty for that now, or two fifty for Terry's, for Shoners.
Then we'll do a motion for the, for thirty-five thousand for Shoners. And this includes the trade-in.
Then Cozy trade-in, yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
And then, what's the forty-two thousand?
No. The seventy-four, fifty for Terry's and thirty-four, eight eighty-seven for Shoners.
So we'll just do thirty-five, five.
For thirty-five, yeah, we'll do thirty-five for Shoners?
Yeah.
You know, cause I only added two fifty for that now, or two fifty for Terry's, for Shoners.
Then we'll do a motion for the, for thirty-five thousand for Shoners. And this includes the trade-in.
Then Cozy trade-in, yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll move on to law director.
Thank you, mayor. First item we have this evening is a third reading. It's resolution two dash one nine point two one, authorizing and approving and directing the mayor to enter into a contract between the village of Hartville and the city of Canton to provide legal representation to the village for prosecution of criminal cases and related matters effective for the period of January one, twenty twenty, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item is a first reading of resolution number two dash one nine point two two, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring the same thing emergency.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion to suspend rules?
Second. Seconded by Sullivan. Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passed by emergency technical.
Second. Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, mayor, that's all I have.
Okay. And to the mayor.
I just quick updates, some informations, one, we have on Woodland Street, in Canton War, there's a project that will be coming, that will be advertised this year, but most of it, the construction will be next year. Most of the, the war line will be from Market Street to General, General Brook and Woodland, the new development there. So that's connecting, Canton War is on Market Street, so will be tied to development in General Brook to that one, to the Market Street. Most of the war line, war line is in the grassy area, it's not in the roadway. There are a couple crossings that will be on Woodland.
This, this is from the north side of, of Woodland, correct?
Basically will serve both.
Oh, it'll serve both sides?
Yeah. But it will run along Woodland. As designed right now, it will be around most, mostly in the grassy area, not in the roadway. Only, there are like two crossings, one by Market Street and the other one, I believe, by Jerome.
Yes, yes.
Those are two crossings.
Is it on the north or, or south side of Woodland?
I believe it's, it's exact, but I think it's a, crosses to the south side, but I have to, I'll check that, I don't have a plan.
Would it be next to the existing sewer lines?
This, what do you mean the?
The existing sewer lines on Woodland, would it be?
Yeah. Look, I mean, as long as, they really have to be ten foot apart.
Right.
So, I'm not sure where is the application for right now, like the one. But I know that, right now I can't remember it, but, and when I saw the plan, when looking at the plan as I see it, I saw that basically runs along the road, not in the pavement, but there's only two crossings. This will be advertised this year, or I think we already advertised it, construction will be next year or early next year. Or, second one is for Danbury Glen. Status of that one, basically, site completed, survey, was on site today, surveyor, and we're in the process of putting everything together right now, so sometime soon, the report will be established and shared with you. Wagner Court, that we just received today, I've seen the schedule from, updated schedule from the contractor, by next Monday, we should start seeing some activities here. It's not necessarily work, but they will start mobilization and just figuring out where's the, toward the requirements and the materials.
Do you have a date on how, approximately how long?
Yeah, so they will start on the, as I said, Monday, and it will last till the, the goal is not any longer than the twenty-seventh of November. The line is deep, so basically they will be carrying most of the alley to get to it. There is a storm line there too, so they need to be careful what they're doing there, that's why it's a little time consuming. Right now, basically, we're going with the, we're going to get it out, tell the whole road, put six-inch asphalt. When they get, when they finish the whole thing, they just come back to base and put six-inch asphalt. I reached out to the contractor today, he did not respond yet, but I'm looking for option B, just to make sure, if for some reason weather wise, we couldn't put asphalt, I want to know what our options are. I want to discuss that with him. So I did not get the response from him yet. I mean, there are options that I'm aware of, but I want to see how much they cost, basically, what, what change associated with it. Or, you know, I, I want to check with Nate too, because I, you know, we can't go with just milling material on top for now. If, that's again, that's option B, just in case if the asphalt did not work out and leave it like that till next year, but we have the snow issue along the snow, so I want to discuss it with Nate, see what else. And this is the option of concrete, but that's gonna change the price, so we don't want to.
In the whole road, yeah.
Yeah, and the whole system that we have here of the road. So that's, that's, these are the three items I have on my list.
Thank you. Any requests of council members?
I, oh, go ahead. Back in September of the seventh meeting, when we were discussing the Walmart community situation, I had asked a question about whether or not Walmart community could proceed with their plans, as in, as long as it stays as a two-family less. The answer that I got, correct me if I'm wrong, was yes, that it could, but I could see no record of that in the minutes for the meeting, going back today and reviewed it. So I would just like to ask, is that statement correct, that they could proceed with their plans moving forward as a two-family development? So under the current permits and everything that they've asked for, if they keep it at two families, with the gym, the kitchen, are they violating anything or are they?
So we would have to submit that project, which they did once before, but through it, and that would be up to the zoning inspector, but it, it meets our two requirements. and that would be up to the zoning inspector, but it, it meets our two requirements.
So they do still have interest, they submitted this, I wanted to make sure.
They did have that, submitted it.
I will listen to the minutes to, just to make sure.
Yeah, I was gonna ask Cheryl to do it.
She's not here, she's on Big Book. That was my understanding, that point, out of that. Okay.
That aligns with it too, but I just didn't see it in the minutes, so I wasn't one hundred percent sure. Thank you, that's all I have.
You should read the Big Book of Minutes, they're really interesting. I just wanna make mention, remind everybody that next Wednesday, the twenty-third, our town hall, it's gonna be a Q and A session. I recommend council members to be there. Anybody involved, voters, residents, everyone should be there. I think it'd be very informative, a lot of good facts.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to the reports of council committees. Commerce Development.
I'm sorry, I got it right now.
Okay. Finance?
Finance actually met on September the twelfth, and at that time, we had, we just simply received the budgets for the twenty-twenty calendar year. And the plan is, is to review those at the next meeting, which is actually already scheduled at October the twenty-second at five thirty.
Okay. First enough meeting?
Nothing.
Plan?
Planning met on October the eighth, and we had three items of business, one of the items had to be review of the zoning ordinance itself, we'll continue to review that. The first item of business is, actually was a lot split. The applicant presented a lot split, a lot split for parcels number two-three-zero-zero-four-three-six and two-three-zero-zero-four-three-seven. It was, the applicant reviewed these with Nate, because there is an easement and access that Nate required, so that access was actually moved to accommodate the lot split, and, you know, Nate was okay with that. So the board actually recommended, or the commission actually recommended that the lot split be presented to council for approval, and I do so, as a motion.
Was that my, is it on Canton?
It's, this is the one that's actually on Canton, right behind the Ford dealership.
Okay. So you have an option?
Yeah.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
The second item of business was the, was the...
Pete's auto.
Was, his engineer presented, this would be the third.
Like to call the October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen meeting of Hartville County Council to order, and we have a full party.
Williams?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Cozy?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Should I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Do we have any citizens' comments on agenda matters only?
Is water flooding on the agenda anyplace?
Um, no, not right now.
I guess I wait till later.
You can wait, okay. We'll move on to the fiscal officer.
You have the council minutes from the October first meeting? There's no changes, motion to approve?
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
You have the listing of the bills from the September twenty-fifth through October eighth? No questions, motion to approve?
Motion to approve the bills?
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
And you have the financial report for September? No questions, motion to approve?
Motion to approve the September monthly report.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just have a couple items. Saturday from ten-thirty to eleven-thirty, the YMCA is having a dog walk up at Hartville Memorial Park. They are giving prizes for the best costumes for dogs, and they will also be collecting donations for the Stark County Humane Society. They had a last year for the first time, and it was very popular. We have trick-or-treat coming up, Sunday, October twenty-seventh, from three to five, and there's also a trick-or-treat downtown the day before, the twenty-sixth, trick-or-treat and a costume contest from eleven to one. So, do both of those. And last item, I swore in, our eighth full-time officer, Frank Coccone, yesterday, he has worked for Southern County Sheriff's Office for seventeen years and has extensive training in many areas that will be of benefit to us. Does anyone have any old business?
Mayor?
Oh, sorry, he... Don't worry.
Last year, I budgeted for this year, a new pickup for the street department, and with everything so busy this summer, late summer, I didn't get around to getting things checked out and everything. And this month, I went out and I, I was trying to find prices for a new pickup. I really can't find any two thousand nineteen, and the state bid, the state bid is for, for two thousand twenty, because it probably won't come out till, till March of next year. So I went to Shoners, and I asked them if they could give me a price, and with a price assist, and see what's what they could come up with. I budgeted forty-five thousand dollars last year for, for a pickup, and what they gave me, I went to them, and then I went to Spencer as well, and Spencer didn't get back to me until a couple days later. By that time, by the time they got back to me, I'd already went to Shaw Shoners to get a price from them. So, but from Shoners, I got a price of thirty-three thousand, six hundred and three dollars, and that is worth a thousand dollar trade-in for our own truck. What we would be trading in is a two thousand one GMC. It has a hundred and thirty thousand, and I think it's six hundred miles, something like that. It's rusted pretty good, rocker panels are rusted out, and the floorboard on the driver's side, if we would keep it, we would have to do something with that, because you're about to put your foot through it, so, and it's, it's seeing its better day, and it's time to get rid of that one. And then, and also then, Shaw Shoners gave me a price of, well, first they, I, I had them give me a price, and they sent me a price, but it wasn't for an extended cab, it was just for a regular cab, and that was for thirty thousand, five hundred, so I called Royce today, and I said, I said, hey, what is it for an extended cab? And he said, you know, he said, add twenty-five hundred dollars on to it. So for them, it would be thirty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, and a thousand dollars off for a trade-in, be thirty-two, five, sixty-two. I would, and then, and then I, for a snowplow for it, this would be a four-wheel drive, it would be a snowplow package, and then, a snowplow, I went over to Terry's Truck and Trailer, I wanted to get a Boss plow, same kind that we have on our other trucks, so when one breaks down, we can just interchange it. The cost of that is six thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents, and then a strobe light and a back rack to put the strobe light in, that fits on the, on the truck, and a hundred dollar mount kit, fifty dollar light bracket. Anyway, that, that, what I would like to do is, I would like to get the Chevrolet. The Chevrolet is a little bit, got a little bit bigger engine in it, a little bit bigger payload in it, it got the new design for two thousand twenty, and they're getting ready reviews on it, and I think, and plus, I'd like to keep it in town as well, as far as that goes. But for all of that would be forty thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighteen cents, and then I added five hundred dollars on to that, just in case I missed something that I would have to get, and so, what I would ask for is forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars, I'll just say forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars to purchase that pickup. If we would go with Ford, which I'm not recommending, the price assist, assistant on that, or price assist, is only good till the end of this month, and if, if we would wait longer than that for the price assistant for that, would go down three thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars, and so then that would be, you know, a higher price for the Ford. I'm not sure about the Chevy, I didn't ask anybody, I don't think, I think their price is fixed on their price assist. So I'd like to say that, and, and I talked to the, talked to the, the Shoners rep, that I might be able to get that trade-in value up a little bit, you know, if I can, all the better. Shaw Shoners is pretty firm on their thousand dollar trade-in, but I would like to get going on this, because it hit their budget for this year, so, any questions?
And the forty thousand price, is that a V plow then?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five, well, that's all my add-ons, with that, that's a plow, the strobes, and the bar, the light bar itself, let's see what I had put on.
Is that a three-quarter or a one-time?
That's one-time.
One-time?
Yeah. That'd be the, the plow, the strobe, the rack, mount kit, and the bracket.
You have two, two vendors? Could you break it down by the two vendors? One's Shoners and one?
Shaw Shoners.
No, the, the plow company.
Oh, I only got one vendor on that?
Yeah, I mean, what's the name of the vendor?
Oh, Terry's, Terry's Truck and Trailer, and...
I can do a motion, council, I would recommend you break it down, one for the dealership, one for the other. Questions?
Well, did you have two since brand new?
Since brand new, yeah. Hundred and thirty thousand. And more important, the miles is actually the most, it's seeing its better days.
So was there?
It's just a two-wheel drive.
Was there a plow on, there wasn't a plow on the truck?
No, on the one that I want to trade in.
Correct.
No, it's just two-wheel, it's two-wheel drive, it's only a half-time, so...
And that would put another plow on the truck, on the road?
Yeah, well, it'll be an extra one, yeah. I don't wanna ever do a pickup without a plow, and this is a plow, it's a nine-foot-two D X T, which is what we have on the five-fifth, and this one-time will handle that, and, you know, it could be, we won't use it for a long time, but if something would happen to that one that we have on the five-fifth, which we do use for our alley, we just switch it out real quick, and that's a plus. I can go with an eight-foot, eight-foot-two D X T, but that's only, what is it, two, three hundred dollars that it costs, and it's only a difference of like two hundred dollars. The eight-foot-two is six thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven, fifty, and the, the nine-foot-two is six hu, six thousand, four hundred and seventy-two, fifty. And this is a V plow, you know, three-foot. So, and Boss, Boss makes a good plow, they really do. So, and also, I'd like to say, as much as I can with the same kind of plow. Any other questions?
Scott, do you have a current budget numbers for the street department available?
I do not have those.
I have the...
Eighteen?
Yeah. I have the nineteen.
For nineteen, any?
Yeah. Do you wanna see it in the book?
Yeah, probably.
I mean, this was budgeted for the equipment, street equipment reserve fund. I was looking for something for comparison, or was it? You have one figure important? Yeah, the street equipment reserve?
Yeah.
Right here on top.
Also, Shoners told me they give us maintenance for two years, as far as oil changes and that kind of stuff, they do it for two months.
That was Shoners that we got?
That was Shoners, yeah. Shaw Shoners didn't offer, I didn't ask, but they didn't offer, so, but they didn't do their... And that was a verbal, I mean, we didn't write it down, and if, if we go with them, I'm definitely, I haven't, for the...
So just, just for, so everybody has, you know, working with the same numbers here, we had a, beginning your balance, a hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. We, we transferred funds in of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and then we've had expenses out of twenty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars, thirty-nine cents. We currently have a balance of two hundred and five dollars, or two hundred and five thousand, four thirty-six tent.
And that's in the street?
That's in the street, that's the capital equipment reserve. And that's where we would actually make purchases from. Basically, we put allotments in every, we put allotments into that fund for the purpose of purchasing equipment. Does anybody else wanna see this? You, you wanna, let me ask around, you, you want this divided up into two, you have an authorized, what you're gonna do, an authorized one for presumably Shoners and one for the other company?
Yeah. Terry's Truck and Trailer, twenty?
This is two thousand and four, yeah.
Can you break, can you break your numbers?
Yeah, I said, yeah, I would give you a seven.
You can be by bigger than you.
You can be by bigger than you.
What do you like doing in Chicago, you know? Just for anything, uh, like, uh, we have a plug bracket that goes in there. You know, for your switches, for your lights and all that kind of stuff, like your strobes. If there's a connection that needs to go on there, I mean, any little thing that, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to pull it. I just want to cover myself for anything that's, that I either didn't see or whatever, promotion request.
Yeah, we'll just do it, it's not to exceed certain.
But what was, what was budgeted was thirty-three?
Four thousand five. No, forty-five.
Forty-five thousand is what the budget amount was. From last year, it's forty-five. And it's to replace the two thousand one. Who's got the, in this program, like factory warranties, all that stuff is still ran great.
Yeah, yeah. I think the, I think the factory warranty is a normal three-year, thirty, thirty-six thousand. And I could look at getting an extended one. This is gas and I'm gonna stay away from the diesel for the pickup. So.
I was thinking about that, but you're not doing that many miles, so.
How far is the diesel?
No, for an extended warranty.
Yeah. Yeah, well, the, the, for the drive-train, the showers does give me, I think it's six-year, a hundred thousand miles. Forgive me, I did this quick, so I think six years, a hundred thousand miles on the drive-train. On, uh, so Ford, I believe it's six years, fifty thousand miles. That'll probably, probably not get fifty thousand in six years. Could, that'll be average about ten thousand a year. So, uh, let's see. If, uh, if it would go seventy-four fifty for, Terry's, I think it's Truck and Trade or something like that.
That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's the name of it. And then. Same.
Way down on Eagle Circle in North Canton?
What's that?
Way down in North Canton.
Sure, oh, yeah, yeah. They're down close to the strip on Prue and Avenue.
Yes, Terry's Truck and Trailer.
Yeah.
Right. We'll go ahead with the first motion. Which would be for the, the plow equipment, not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars for Terry's Truck and Trade.
Question. I do not think this is really a good thing to do this year at this time. And I just want counsel to seriously think about that.
We had a second by Williams. Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
And then, what's the forty-two thousand?
No. The seventy-four fifty for Terry's and thirty-four eight eighty-seven for showers.
So we'll just do thirty-five five.
For thirty-five, yeah, we'll do thirty-five for showers?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I only had two fifty for that and I had two fifty for Terry's. I should do a pair.
Then we'll do a motion for the, for the thirty-five thousand for showers. And this includes the trade-in.
Danny Cozy trade-in, yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll move on to law director.
Thank you, mayor. First item we have this evening is a third reading. It's Resolution two dash one nine point two-one, authorizing and approving and directing the mayor to enter into a contract between the village of Hartville and the city of Canton to provide legal representation to the village for the prosecution of criminal cases and related matters effective for the period of January one, twenty twenty through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item is a first reading of Resolution number two dash one nine point two-two. Accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and clearing the same free emergency.
Second.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion to suspend rules?
Second.
Seconded by Sullivan. Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passed by emergency attorney.
Second. Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller? Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, mayor, that's all I have.
Okay. And the mayor?
Just quick updates, uh, some informations. One, we have, on Woodland Street, um, from Canton War, uh, there's a project that will be coming, that will be advertised this year, but most of it, the construction will be next year. Most of the, the warline will be from Market Street to General, General Brook and Woodland, the new development there. So that's connecting, Canton War is a Market Street, so we tie the new development in General Brook to that one, to the Market, Market Street. Most of the warline, warline is in the grass areas, not in the roadway. There are a couple crossings that will be on Woodland.
This is from the north side of, of Woodland, correct?
Basically, it will serve both.
Oh, it'll serve both sides?
Yeah. But it will run along, uh, Woodland. As designed right now, it will be around most, mostly in the grass area, not in the roadway. Only there are like two crossings, one by Market Street and the other one, I believe, by Jerome.
Yes, yes.
Those are two crossings.
Is it on the north or, or south side of Woodland?
I believe it's, it's exact, but I think it's, it crosses to the south side. I'm not, I have to double check that right now. I don't have a plan.
Would it be next to the existing sewer lines?
This will be the, the existing sewer lines on Woodland, would be? Yeah. Look, I mean, as long as, they really have to be ten foot apart.
Right.
So I'm not sure where is the application for right now. But I know that, right now I can't remember it, but anyway, when I saw the plan, when looking at the plans, I see, I saw that basically runs along the road, not in the pavement, but there's only two crossings. This will be advertised this year, or I think we already advertised it. Construction will be next year, early this year. Or, second one is for Danbury Glen. Status of that one, basically, site visit completed. Survey, was on site today, surveyor, and we're, plus putting everything together right now, so sometime soon, a report will be established and shared with you. Wagner Court, that we just received today, I've seen the schedule from, updated schedule from the contractor. By next Monday, we should start seeing some activities here. It's not necessarily work, but they will start mobilization and just figuring out where's the, what their requirements and the materials.
Do you have a date on how, approximately how long?
Yeah, so they will start on the, uh, as I said, Monday, and it will last till the, goal is not any longer than the twenty-seventh of November. Light is deep, so basically they will be tearing most of the alley to get to it. There is a storm line there too, so they need to be careful what they're doing there, but that's why it's a little bit time consuming. Right now, basically, we're going with this, they're, we're gonna tear it out, tear the whole road, put six-inch asphalt. When they get, when they finish the whole thing, they just come back to base and put six-inch asphalt. I reached out to the contractor today, he did not respond yet, but I'm looking for option B, just to make sure. If for some reason weather-wise we couldn't put asphalt, I want to know what our options are. I want to discuss that with him. So I did not get the response from him yet. I mean, there are options that I'm aware of, but I want to see how much they cost, basically, what, what, what change associated with it. Or, you know, I, they want to check with Nate too, because I, you know, we can't go with just milling material on top for now. If, that's again, that's option B, just in case the asphalt did not work out. And leave it like that for next year, but we have the snow issue along the snow, so I want to discuss it with Nate to review that. And there's the option of concrete, but that's gonna change the price. So we don't want to.
In the whole road, yeah?
Yeah, and the whole system that we have here of Woodland. So that's, that's, these are the three items I have on my list.
Thank you. Any requests of council members?
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
Back in September, the seventh meeting, we were discussing the Woodland community situation. I had asked a question about whether or not Woodland community could proceed with their plans, as in, as long as the state isn't two-family less. The answer to that doubt, correct me if I'm wrong, was yes, that it could. But I could see no record of that in the minutes for the meeting. I went back today and reviewed it. So I would just like to ask, is that statement correct? That they could proceed with their plans moving forward, that's a two-family development. Under the current permits and everything that they've asked for, if they keep it at two families with the gym, kitchen, are they violating anything or are they?
So they would have to submit that project, which they did once before, but through it. And that would be up to the zoning inspector, but it, it meets our two requirements.
They do still need it, so they submitted this, but I wanted to make sure.
They did have that submitted, they were.
I will listen to the minutes to, just to make sure.
I was gonna ask Cheryl to do it.
She's not here, she's on Big, that was my understanding, that point, out of that. Okay.
That aligns with it too, but I just didn't see it in the minutes, so I wasn't one percent sure. Thank you, that's all I have.
You should read the big book of minutes, they're really interesting. Um, I just want to make mention to remind everybody that next Wednesday, the twenty-third, our, our town hall, it's gonna be a Q and A session. I, I recommend council members to be there. Anybody involved, voters, residents, everyone should be there. I think it'd be very informative, a lot of good facts.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to the reports of council committees. Commerce Development.
I'm sorry, I got it right now.
Finance?
Finance actually met on, um, September the twelfth. And, um, at that time, we had, um, we just simply received the budgets for the twenty-twenty, um, calendar year. And, um, the plan is, is to, um, review those, um, at the next meeting, which is actually already scheduled at October the twenty-second at five thirty.
Person off meeting?
Nothing.
Plan?
Planning met on October the eighth. And, um, we had, uh, three items of business. One of the items had to be review of the, um, of the zoning ordinance itself. We'll continue to review that. The first item of business is, actually was a lot split. The applicant presented, um, a lot split, a lot split for parcels number two-three-zero-zero-four-three-six and two-three-zero-zero-four-three-seven. It was, the, the applicant reviewed these with Nate, because there is a, an easement, and access that Nate required, so that access was actually moved to accommodate the lot split. And, you know, Nate was okay with that. So the, um, board actually recommended, or the commission actually recommended that the, um, the lot split be presented to council for approval, and I do so as a motion.
Is that my?
Is it on Canton?
It's, this is the one that's actually on Canton, right behind the Ford dealership.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Yeah.
Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
The second item of business was the, um, was the, the, his auto, it was, um, his engineer presented, this would be the third presentation he had for, um, revised plans. We had actually tabled it twice. So they could come up with the proper plan, with the proper parking. In those plans, we reviewed the, um, the actual size of the area, and we covered all the recommendations or the requirements according to the engineer. They were, those were satisfied. The, um, uh, fire chief actually approved the fire access to the building. So from, from the fire department's point of view, that access is, was approved. And, um, from the zoning inspector, we went through all the parking requirements, and finally, they finally got the parking requirements all satisfied. So from all the areas of the planning commission, um, they finally presented, um, something that we could approve. The zoning inspector actually signed off on an actual, the actual plans, so that we have something solid which we want. And the other thing I requested from the zoning inspector was a list, just like the engineer provides a list, I wanted the restrictions for this, uh, sales auto to be also provided as a list, uh, the restrictions out of the zoning book. Examples were that cars could not sit on the lot for more than thirty days, so that we won't turn them into a junkyard, so.
And that was done?
And it, was it done? I was gonna ask you if you turned that.
Last week.
We have that list that's also being attached to the, to the, uh, recommendations. And from that, the planning commission did recommend approval, um, of the revised plans for the construction in that area. And I present that as a motion.
I will second that.
Question. How many cars are they allowed to have?
His, he has enough space for thirty-nine parking places. He has, I believe it was four bays for servicing.
It's not so much how many he's allowed to have, it's, they're not allowed to sit there more than thirty days.
Yeah, there is, there's.
But even the ones in the back that they've got now, that looks like they're, they're.
These are the ones for the.
For sale.
Mechanics there, the mechanics there.
This is, this is for the mechanic side of it. The sale side of it's already been approved.
Approved.
This is a completely separate building, um.
So how are we gonna know if those cars are there longer than thirty days?
Yeah, um, Ray has, Ray has vowed to keep real close eye on.
You know, on the plans, I guess there's like, like now, hunting lot.
On the plans, I guess there's like, like now, a lot associated for the new building, and a lot associated for the old buildings. Yep, and that's how we, it will be checked.
Will he have a different, and I know at one time, it's spoken about a different access onto wheels. Is that completely out now?
That is completely out.
Okay.
It, in order to, the engineer explained, in order to keep the, the land disturbance under one acre.
Okay.
They, they took that piece of it out, and they actually increased the radiuses from, you know, coming off of Maple. They increased the radiuses so that the fire department can actually make the turns.
That's where I kinda, I've read that, fire department.
The disturbance area is actually 0.92, it's 92 hundreds of an acre. So, he pushed it right to the limit.
And this is for Pete's Auto?
This is, I wanna make sure I get the name right.
It says Pete's Auto.
Yeah, it says Pete's Auto LLC. No. We had a motion by Sullivan, seconded by Miller. Williams?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Cozy?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
The last thing is, is the, like I said, we did, did partial review of the, of the zoning ordinance. We will continue to review the zoning ordinance. The next meeting is actually scheduled for, we moved it from the 12th to the 18th because of all vacation schedules, to try to get everybody involved. So we moved it to the 18th at 7 o'clock. There will be an additional lot split, a replat actually, by Chusco, that will be reviewed at that time. That's all I had for planning.
Okay. Parks and Recreation?
Nothing new, just an update that hopefully our stuff, our expected ship, or at least some of it did, hopefully, some of it could be here as early as tomorrow. We'll see what we get.
Safety?
Ah, nothing, I was gonna talk about park, but you already knew that, so.
Sure. Sewer rates?
Nothing for sewer rates.
Street drainage?
Nothing for street drainage. I was gonna ask, do you have a chance to review repaving program?
Yes, I did, and I, the rules that I have right now on my list, I'm sure they'll review that. You know, I have Wagner, Robson, and then the alley right by the village hall. Miller, Grand Trunk, and the Stepping. So these are the rules that I have, I'm not sure if we are to look to review. And I wait by the, the way how we rate them, if it's, you know, be mill and fill or for reconstruction. And I add, I can associate a cost for those, including even engineering infrastructure. But I wasn't sure if there's any additional laws that we want, we look at, or just.
Yeah, there, there were actually quite a few. I'll, I'll get with you guys.
Cause I thought we were gonna start with the ones around the.
Around the school, basically around this area is what we were gonna review.
Right. And for those right now, I am about, just that estimate, this is about like 400, 60,000.
Okay, okay.
So I'll, whatever you guys want to cover with this list, and whatever we wanna add to it, I can look at it and see anything, but that will kind of give us an idea of what we.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Zoning?
Nothing.
Any miscellaneous business? Any citizens' comments, not on agenda items?
For those of you that don't know me, I'm Bruce Clipick. I live at 727 Oneida Trail in Indian Village. And I wanted to speak tonight, I've been gone all summer, so this is the first council meeting that I could've come to to talk about flooding in Indian Village that happened on July 7th. And our backyard and our basement became a retention basin. We have a storm sewer right away through the backyard, that curves around the house and crosses Oneida Trail, headed east towards the Swartstich, I think it is that it eventually empties into. The sewer line has been there ever since we've been here. I think it was built about 15 years before we moved in in 1988. The sewer line enters the manhole in our backyard, has a 36-inch diameter pipe, and leaves the manhole as a 42-inch pipe. Now, that's important, because that kind of an area increase increases the flow rate, literally, for our lot by 36%. The storm sewer capacity on July 7th had to have been exceeded, because the manhole overflowed and formed a lake. Now, that picture that I passed around, roughly in the end, in the center of the lake is where the four-foot diameter manhole cover is, with the sewer grate on it. I haven't done surveying on it, but I think it was under at least a foot, maybe 18 inches of water. We wound up with water flowing in, we think through the footer drains, which are tied into that sewer. We had 18 inches of water in our basement, and that happened within about an hour and 20 minutes. We have three half horsepower sump pumps, because we were suspicious of potential flooding. Those three sump pumps have a combined, combined pumping capacity of over 300 gallons a minute. We wound up with somewhere around 12,000 gallons of water in the basement. The rainfall on the date on July 7th, we have a weather station in our backyard, incidentally, which reports to the internet. It's called Indian Village. Welcome to look at weather underground and see it at any time. Our internet went down because of the flood in the basement, and up to the time it went down, we had four inches of rainfall for the day. Two, two inches of it was early in the day, and another two inches was roughly in the two hours before the flood started. Total for the day was 4.34 inches. At 31 years of living in our home, I have never seen that sewer overflow. Typically, after four to six inches of rain, sewer water level has been less than half of the pipe viewed through the grate and the manhole cover. Why did it happen? Well, one of the obvious potentials is the sewer downstream from our manhole is either plugged or collapsed. I think the village needs to investigate whether it means by putting a camera through there, or, believe me, 42 inches is big enough to walk through. I used to work for the village of Aurora, and crawl through sewers, high school job. There's also the possibility that we've got a greater quantity of water coming in to the sewer, and more runoff than we used to due to lack of water control in the high, higher areas of the village. Sewer might be too small, although it's worked fine for over 30 years. I do understand that multiple streets in Indian Village were closed due to water. I don't know how many, but I know that barricades were put up, people couldn't drive through streets, even on the high end of Indian Village. A significant amount of water flows through the woods to the west of us, from the property in the township. Flows from God Road, through our woods, and into the sewer in our backyard. I have to question why so much water is coming through there. And I took a quick look at the topo maps, topographical maps, this afternoon. And the line, the topo line, the elevation line going through our backyard is 1,058 feet. The development on woodland, particularly at the east end, is higher than that. Now, I have to ask, and the engineer might be able to answer this, might take some study. But I have to ask, if the culverts that they put in on woodland, and any of the movement of the dirt in that project south of woodland, has changed the water flow through there. Water flows downhill, and it's 15 feet higher on woodland than it is in our backyard. I have to ask, is it coming from there? But I think that there needs to be a study. I've been reading all summer newspaper accounts of problems in the northeast corner of the village. But Indian Village, I think, has been ignored, because everybody's assumed that there is no problem. About 18 inches of water, 40-yard dumpster filled with stuff that was in the basement. Fortunately, we have insurance coverage. That is a, an add-on that I recommend that everybody look at their home insurance. Make sure that you have an additional clause in there for sewer backup or water inflow. If you don't have it, you're stuck for the entire village itself. Any questions?
What's the address, sorry, I didn't catch the address for your property.
727 Oneida Trail. It's down at the lower wooded end. It's the same lot that used to have 24 more pine trees.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi folks, Kelly Discount, 1116 Woodland, love our community. Just would like clarification on what we are permitted to do within our current zoning of an R2.
Let it on just a second before you walk in.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Believe it or not, there's a homeless person with, a homeless mom with two kids at the hotel. So literally on the phone with them, so, sorry.
Yeah, Chris was raised. All the, all the minutes on September 17th, verify what was said or not being, if not.
But can you ta, can you all tell me, I mean, I'm raising the room together, can you all tell me what we're.
Ray, the zoning inspector will have to talk to you, that's his area. And I told him you have anything tonight, so hang on. But, yeah, that's, Ray will have to talk to you.
But Ray also said that it had to be 10 acres and watered on all foursides, and it says or, so I just, I need, I need, like, group consensus on this? Because as I said before, it, like, the rules change and what's being read changes often, and I just, we need to know where we stand right now today. And that should be something that you all can determine right now, I mean.
That's why Ray's the zoning inspector.
I mean, but he said, but, but you know, I mean, you were part of that conversation, Cindy, I mean, he said, if, I don't care if it says or, you have to have both. So in my, I'm concerned about not having a consensus among everybody at this table, who are the elected officials for our village, to not be on the same page.
With all due respect, Miss Discount, there is a process. If a person wants to do overconstruct in the village, they take a zoning application out for that purpose. The building official, the zoning inspector, reviews the application, grants or denies the request. From that grant or denial, an appeal can be made to the BZA. From the BZA, that is presented to council. That's the process, has been the process.
I understand completely that for process, but I'm telling you right now, as we have an R2. So I'm asking, as a business owner in the community, what am I allowed to do in an R2?
Allowed to do what the zoning book allows.
What is that?
I mean, I'm not trying to be facetious with you, but there's a zoning book. If you look at the section of the book that says that you can do it in an R2, that's what you can do. And, and the interpretation of that zoning book as a threshold reminder is with the zoning inspector. That's been the process, has always been the process. People don't change your rules in the middle of the process, that is the process.
Well, I, again, with all due respect, would, would absolutely say that is not true. But that is, that is, that is opinion, and that's fine. I'm just, I'm looking for facts, like what in an R2 are people permitted to do?
Permitted uses.
Permitted uses.
Are listed in.
Which are, can anybody tell me? Is there a reason that nobody can tell me? And this is that same kind of, like, this has been going on for months and months and months.
With all due respect, with all due respect, random seating doesn't make it any different.
No, I'm not random seating, I'm just trying to get everybody in the room together.
Book is the book. R2 is listed on page 24. I mean, I really hope you're not asking me to read verbatim, section R2 to you this evening. I mean, if that's what you direct me to do, I'll read it to you. Principal permitted uses are listed, there's 8. Accessory uses listed, there's 2. I mean, that's what is permitted, absent avarious in the village of Hartville in an R2. Do you want me to read them to you? I will.
Yes, please.
Item number one, let's just start it. Article 9, R2s, one and two-family residence district. Roman numeral one. The following regulations and the regulations contained in Article 6 shall apply in the R2, one and two-family residence districts. Subsection A, principal permitted use. Subsection 1, one and two-family dwellings. Subsection 2, alterations and conversions of single-family dwellings into two-family dwellings in accordance with the lottery. Frontage and yard requirements as set forth in this article. Subsection 3, any use or structure permitted and as regulated in the R1 district, except as hereafter modified. Subsection 4, churches and parish houses. Subsection 5, schools and colleges for academic instruction, customary residential and recreational facilities, and fraternity and sorority houses, if located on the same unit of property upon which the school or college buildings are situated, and provided that any stadium, gymnasium, ballpark, auditorium, dormitory, fraternity house, sorority house, or multiple living units shall be at least 250 feet from any lot in any R district. Subsection 6, nursery schools and childcare centers, when authorized by the board, subject to provisions of Article 20, subsection 5, subsection A, and provided that any building be located not less than 20 feet from any other lot in any R district. And that there is established and maintained in connection therewith a completely fenced and screened play lot. Subsection 7, community development projects containing one family, two family, and/or multiple dwellings, when authorized by the board, subject to provisions of Article 17, section Roman numeral 2. Subsection 8, residence of owner-operator used as bed and breakfast. That's the principal permitted uses, which refers back to R1. So a principal permitted use in an R1 is also a principal permitted use in an R2. So let me just read permitted uses. So Article 8, R1, single-family residence district. Section 1, the following regulations and the regulations contained in Article 6 shall apply in the R1, single-family residence district. Subsection A. Subsection A, permitted uses. Subsection one, single-family dwellings. Subsection two, park parenthetically, not including amusement park or a park operated for profit, close parentheses. That's the permitted, you permitted uses in an R one and a principal, and a permitted principal use in an R two. That's what you're allowed.
So what are you checking on then, Cindy, or whomever? Like, what do you, according, for love our community?
I don't think we're checking on anything, I don't know what you're asking.
I, yeah, I mean...
The minutes.
Oh, I'm just making sure the minutes that...
What the minutes reflect?
Because we went through our project last time, right, on the seventeenth, to see can, can we do the different parts, is that correct?
No.
Didn't?
No. No, there is no pending application with the village of Hartville.
No, currently, as it stands, that's what we're trying to get the answer to. Currently in the R two, what part of our project are we allowed to do?
We don't have a project in front of us to kind of, if you want to refile an application so there is a project to consider, that can be done. There isn't a project before the village. There was a project that was submitted and then withdrawn. I don't, I don't know if there's a disconnect with your design team, but there is nothing...
No, there's no disconnect with the design team. I, I'm going off of conversations with folks from the council.
All I'm doing is listening to the minutes Jeff asked me to listen to, to see what was said about...
The project.
The project. I mean...
There was nothing listed in the minutes from the seventeenth, if you're arguing that question.
And there was no votes or anything like that.
But your recollection was...
We had a recollection of talking to Ray, but it wasn't listed, so we're not going to review those if it's not in the minutes that we want to discuss it. You are permitted to have one and two family people, and if one or two families live there, that's what you're permitted to do right now. Anything further that community development does have to be approved by the board with an application turned in.
But we have a, we are allowed to do the addition, we're allowed to do the addition, correct? We had a variance for that that was approved with the medical and the counseling.
There was no... That's, that's all part of the community, but there's, none of that is approved. Right. Nothing was approved.
There was one.
There was a variance.
There was one variance.
The, the setback. For the counseling and the medical...
Eighteen-foot setback was approved for variance for that property.
So that is a, that is permitted to move forward?
No. I mean, because you had a, you had an approval of a setback for a project that ultimately was not approved, so it's, it's a moot point. You can't move forward, and you had, you had one of three variances approved, without the other two, you can't move forward without, with your project. You have to submit a project for consideration and approval.
So we were not approved for a variance?
You're not approved for a project.
But did we, do we have the variance? Can we, can we do the addition on our building?
No, no.
Why?
Because the variance was under the project.
Was it? They were three separate.
Yeah, it's all part of the, the same project. That's what they're saying. It's all part of one egg.
Okay.
I mean, if you have a project you want to, and I've indicated that before, if you have a project you want to submit that does not require, um, a variance, then it will be considered by the zoning inspector. If it has variances, if it's not the same project as before, then you don't have to wait that time for it.
Right. No, we understand that, we understand that. Okay, so to, just to be clear, because we were under the understanding, including our legal counsel, that we did receive the variance and we were able to do that, so we were not under the understanding at any point in time that those three things were connected together. So what you're saying is...
Those three variances were connected to that project.
Because it's the same build, the building is the same build. I mean, you're adding on the same build.
It was, it was under one application of a project.
So we would have to submit three different applications for, in the future, like, if we want to adjust that, like, we could submit just that separately, separate application, is that correct? Do I understand that correctly?
I don't understand your question, to be honest.
If she was to adjust the kitchen setback, would that be a zone?
Do we have to submit an application for that?
Would that be a standalone, during?
So we have to submit a separate application for that, and then we would have to submit a separate application to do the community development component, and then we would have to submit a separate application to do, um, the, the other ones, the less than ten acres. So are those three separate?
It could be one application.
But they're all ruled upon as one?
Usually council, usually the BZA breaks it down because maybe certain aspects of a project will be approved, but not all aspects of the project, so you should...
Well, we were all approved. All of ours were approved by BZA.
But they weren't approved by council.
Right, but what I, that's what I'm asking, do we have to, do we have to submit three separate applications? If we want a less than ten acres, a setback, and a community development certificate, do we have to submit three separate applications?
You have to, you don't have a project pending before the village of Hartville.
No, I'm saying, if I want to resubmit, I'm just asking, I want to resubmit, do I have to submit three separate applications? An application for the setback, an application for the less than ten acres, and an application for the community development.
And I guess my answer to you again is you don't necessarily have to submit three separate applications, but you have to designate within your application for your project the various types of variances you're looking for, whether it's a setback variance, whether it's a request for a community development, whether it's a relief from having to pay the parking lot, whether it's sort of leaving from having...
We meant all that, but we, we did that on our application, we had three separate requests on our application.
And they were all considered.
And the one was approved, but what I hear, and I, again, I'm just trying to learn you guys.
Sure, I understand.
But what I hear you saying, though...
Because that project was denied, the variance didn't, it doesn't matter because you...
You can't do anything with the building, so a variance to add onto the building doesn't really, you can't do that by itself.
So are you looking, Kelly, are you looking for a two-family with a setback application? Is that what you're thinking of right now?
Of being able to do the counseling and the, yes. Because we were, we were under the, I mean, we were very much under the impression that we, we received that variance, that was approved, and we were able to move forward with that. The other two were denied, that it was not a package, and I still ask, like, I hear you saying you don't have to do three separate applications, but I also hear you saying you need to do three separate applications if we want them to be separate.
I'm just trying to be precise with the words. When you, when you say the word application, I, I think of a, a zoning application, and I think of a separate fee for that application. If the scope of your application is to cover this project and you have, you know, for example, when Sheetz came into town and they wanted a zoning variance or wanted to get some variance on some signs, they had one master project and then they had variances within that. I mean, we're not trying to nickel and dime people and saying we want our fifty dollars every time you want, well, if you have a project and it has a number of variances in it, just list your variances out so that we can improve your project. What happens, as Mr. Sullivan's described earlier, is the zoning inspector goes through, and he has an obligation to adhere to the book, so there's so many parking spaces required, he has to check them out.
Right, right, and we, we received all that, like, we, we did all of that. We, all of our parking, all of our...
I'm going to speak for him, because you, you want to know how this works. And then he looks at it and says, oh, the side setback requirement is X, the front setback requirement is that, the rear setback requirement is S.
Yep, yep.
And if you meet, meet it all, then you don't go to the BZA. If you don't meet it all, then he can approve the parts that are okay and the parts that are not okay, then you have the opportunity to appeal that to the BZA and say, I want relief from this...
Right, I understand. We didn't need to do that, though, because we had approval. We, we have approval from the BZA, and it came to council.
But what he's trying to say, Kelly, is that approval only went with that project, and you don't have to do separate applications because everything you're going to do is only going to go with that project, no matter what, I guess, is, am I right?
I, I really, okay.
I think we've learned from the decision, though. You put it all together, and the project is denied, the overall project is denied, not matters.
That's not good for business owners.
Especially if you want to work on the kitchen, nothing stopped, nothing is stopping you from applying individually.
For a variance for that kitchen?
Yes, it'll be, it'll need more and more application fees if you choose to know that how, but you can divide it up into steps if you want to.
And that's solely because we had it on one piece of paper, on one application. So if we would have separated them and that one would have gone through, we would have gotten, we would have been able to...
Right.
So, so then essentially what we're back to is, yes, you need three separate applications.
Right.
You need an application for any specific item you want to do.
Okay, so just to be clear, that's, that's what we need in order to separate them and not have them umbrellaed under one, separate applications.
Each application we review in Bodleman independently.
And have to stand on their own.
And stand on its own, okay. Is that... Yes? Yes?
If you're asking, do you apply for a variance to build a commercial-grade kitchen?
Nobody said anything about commercial.